I'm Barbara McDay and I am with the League of Women Voters. And with me tonight is Nancy Ogle, who is also with the League of Women Voters, and she will be our timer tonight. The League of Women Voters grew right out of the suffrage movement. And today it has both men and women. And one of our important things is making information available to voters. This includes candidates and their positions. And when there's a statewide race, we do a printed voter guide. And it's an easy-to-read voter guide. We work with Lundersy volunteers to make sure that it's on an easy-reading level. It includes not only descriptions from the candidates on their positions, but also how to vote, how to register absentee ballots, et cetera. It's a lot of work, but it's something that we have found that people really find valuable. We also have a service called Vote 411, which also includes information on the candidates' issues. We have two forums tonight. The first is for school committee. And both our candidates have turned up, thank goodness. And each candidate got the first question prior to the forum. And that question was, what do you feel is the biggest challenge? Okay, I'm sorry. Don't answer that question again. First, everyone gets two minutes to talk about themselves, present themselves to the public. And then we will go to the question. I'm so sorry.
Thank you. So Billy, is your camera off?
It's not. But it's not recording.
And why is it on?
Because I was respectfully walking away, but I can take it down. But thank you.
Based on the first amendment, this seems how we're going.
The people who are hosting this ask for it not to be recorded. Just know that it's a party.
Why is it so afraid?
Are their lights are off for the speaker?
That's not legal. It's not legal, but I don't, I didn't set it up. I'm just here as a candidate.
You're right. It's first amendment.
It is.
It is available to the public. So we are not holding back any information from anyone. We have had problems in the past of people making recordings of things and then making snippets and using them in campaign ads and editing it so that it wasn't what the candidate really said. So we ask in our meetings that we do the recording. We're doing it through the town, and it will be a bit tough.
Thank you. So I'm Kristin Shory, and most of you probably know who I am because I am running for the second time to be on the Herman School Department School Committee. And just to give you a little background, I grew up in Winterport. I attended the Ray H. Smith School from kindergarten to eighth grade, and then I graduated from Hampden Academy in 1989. I went on to attend college in Boston, where I earned my bachelor's science degree in early childhood and special education from LeLah College in 1993. I've also completed my master's degree in special ed from online from Grand Canyon University in 2012, while being a busy mom of two children. I hold a graduate certificate in early intervention from Gallaudet University, which specializes in working with children who are deaf. I am fluent in American Sign Language, and I'm a certified special ed teacher, teacher of the deaf. I'm also a special education administrator here in the state of Maine. I have five teacher certifications. I have worked in the field of early intervention and special ed for approximately 30 years. And I've been at the main educational center for the Deaf and Hard of Hearing since 2006. In addition to deaf and hard of hearing children, I have extensive experience working with children on the autism spectrum, those that are deaf-blind, some that use augmentative communication as well as sign language, and those with multiple disabilities. That is my specialty. I'm a really strong advocate for working with families across Maine. I've been married to my husband Craig Shory, who works for Sargent Corporation for 22 years. And we are the parents of Jillian, who is 21, and she just finished her junior at Hussin in the nursing program. And my son Ryan is 17, soon to be 18, and graduating from Herman in three weeks. They're both products of the Herman School Department, K-12. We built our home in Herman in November of 2002, 2002, and we've been there ever since. We thought it would be our starter home, and we move on. But we love our neighborhood, and we have a corner lot that is a great space and has been a great place to raise children. So I've also had a lot of experience with volunteering, and I see my time's up, but in this whole community, from all of the PTAs at every building, from being the youth cheering coach for the Herman Rec, and really just being that all-around mom who is at every event and willing to support the church at any moment.
Good evening. My name's Brian Vazino. Thank you all for attending and coming to see us tonight. Appreciate the support. I too am a graduate of Hampden Academy. Kristin and I were able to attend school together. And I was in class of 1990. So we do have somewhat of a common background as far as our childhood goes. I can't move forward without recognizing my wife, Jody. I'm a proud husband of my, with my wife. We've been married for 18 years. And we're 18-year residents of Herman. We have two kids that are currently in the school department. So I have a very vested interest in ensuring the school department moves forward so that my kids have a positive experience. I'm a stay-at-home dad. And as I've said in meetings, I'm probably the luckiest guy in town because I get to stay home and see my children grow and develop. And the reason I'm a stay-at-home dad is because I'm retired. I retired from the military after 22 years of active duty. And then I had the two years where I worked for a short time for the Bangor Airport as a municipal airport assistant director. When I was in the military, I had many command opportunities to demonstrate my leadership skills. One of my most relevant assignments was that I was selected to command the Regional Training Institute, which is the main National Guard's premier education facility in Bangor. And I had the privilege of building that from the ground up. I'm also a veteran. I'm a two-time deployment to Iraq. And I had the, I wouldn't call it a pleasure, but I was able to command a unit that went to Iraq and was very proud of what we did. I have 28 years of leadership experience. I have a master's degree in management, a bachelor's degree in secondary education, a graduate certificate in human resources. And I'm also a graduate at the Command and General Staff College from the U.S. Army. I have over 15 years of management of federal and municipal budgets. I'm a detailed planner, and the majority of my military experience has been in planning. And more importantly, I think the most success of my career has been that I've been a team builder. Any success that I've been able to build on deployments or any other organization that I've run has been because I've been able to select a good team to get the job done.
Thank you. Brian, do you want to stay up there and answer our first question?
Let's forget the first question.
Well, the prepared question.
Yeah.
How are you nervous? What do you feel is the biggest challenge facing the Herman School District? And what can be done to meet the challenge?
In my opinion, the biggest challenge in the Herman School District right now is the, I hate the phrase, Danielle, you're gonna hate me for this one. I hate the term transparency, but it really comes down to communication. The communication within the school department right now impacts almost every portion of this town. As we come to these meetings, and the town council is forced to have to deal with school issues, it is a clear indication of the breakdown of communication between the school department, specifically the school committee, down to the rest of the school department. And then the communication out from the school committee to you as parents. And that is where I stand, is that the breakdown of communication between the school administration and the school council or school committee to the parents and residents of Herman has been a huge distraction in the town, and it's the biggest problem for the school. And right now is the biggest problem for this community.
Thank you. Again, the question was, what do you feel is the biggest challenge facing the Herman School District? And what can be done to meet this challenge?
I feel the biggest challenge is the current strife between the Herman School Department and some of the individuals on the town council and other community members. There are unresolved issues from the past, which some of the people are no longer here to make right. There were lots of challenges and changes in leadership. So I feel that the current members need to work on building trusting relationships and to have each other's back, to believe that each entity's goal is to do what's best for students and families and residents of this town. We shouldn't be micromanaging each other, but rather working together positively. And I do agree with Brian in the sense about communication, but I think that building relationships is really what also builds transparency and communication.
Thank you. Do you want to stand there or share? I'm trying to go back and forth.
Yeah, thank you.
Nobody is always first. This is the first question from the public. And we have lots and lots of questions prior to tonight. It's kind of interesting. What was the most valuable thing that you learned in your K-12 education experience? And do you think it's being taught in the Herman schools?
Good question. I think that probably one of the most valuable things growing up in Winterport and then moving on to Hampden Academy, which most of you probably know is now an RSU, was SAD 22 then, but we ended up bringing multiple towns together and different people. I think that growing up, you learn about that everyone has differences, differences in their homes that are different than what is happening in the school, but that we all bring different perspectives to the table and knowledge that really brings who we are as people growing up and becoming adults.
Brian?
Same question?
Yes. I'm thinking of a second. What was the most valuable thing you learned in your K-12 experience? And do you think it's being taught in the Herman schools?
First of all, my dad was a school teacher, so I grew up in a teacher's home. So I got to see and have relationships with teachers that not all parents or not all kids got to experience. But the biggest thing I think comes out of my K-12 experience is a traditional education. Back in the late '70s through 1990, we focused on traditional education and those traditional relationships that you have between teachers and parents, teachers and students. To this day, I still call Mr. Tibbetts, Mr. Tibbetts, and Mr. Granny because you build that respect and that relationship that a traditional school system should instill in their students. I don't believe that modern education moves in that same direction, that the level of respect and professionalism between teachers, administration, parents, and students is not there. And I think that's something that we need to, as a community, if it's not a nationwide priority, as a community, we need to insist gets re-energized in our schools.
Thank you. Yeah, you should stay there because I'm behind.
Oh, yeah.
What do you think the best thing our schools are doing? What are they doing right?
What are they doing right? It's easy to point problems with the administration. But I feel very confident with, at the principal and below level, if that makes sense. There's been a lot of community issues with the school committee and the superintendent's office. And as I reviewed questions and ideas for today, do I have a problem with the elementary school principal? No, she's answered my questions, and she's been very responsive, saying that I don't have a specific middle school, but I know parents that have middle schools. And I've had the opportunity to speak with the high school principal. So I think the administration at the school level down is very responsive and good with parents overall. I think it's the above where we run into our conflicts. So that's what I think is going well, is that school-level administration.
I think that all administration in our school is working and working well and also able to hire and put those leaders, as Brian mentioned, at each school-building level, has hired great people. All of them are good leaders. We, I have been here in the past while my children were there, and I have seen change. And I think that this change has been good and positive. I think that there was a lot that went into hiring our superintendent, and he has very strong characteristics and knowledge that he brings to the table. And I think that he is a good leader. I think that we've been in a part of this, you know, post-COVID, where things have changed and that when we first start a job, and everyone is given time to learn their job and to be supported and to move forward, and also take suggestions for change, which he has. Maybe other people don't think from them, but as far as those of us that are on the school committee, he has. So I feel that's been positive. Don't like.
Audience, can you hear okay? Every five years, the school's superintendent enters into an agreement with other towns on having those students come to Herman High School. The high school is reaching capacity. I see one of three options. Build a new school at Herman at taxpayer expense. Put portal buildings up at Herman taxpayer expense. Or do not renew agreement with other towns. Which would you pick, or do you have another option, and why?
At the beginning, you said that the agreement is only for high school.
Right.
Right. So I would say, I haven't heard that we're totally at capacity at the high school level. So I think that, yes, 40% currently. So if we look at the population of the high school this year, 40% of those students are coming from out of district. That is correct. However, the increase in number of students that are coming in also helps us with our amount of money that is revenue. So there is tuition for those students, so they bring money to that. I do think that we, if I remember correctly, I remember them talking about the way that they, the high school was built, that it had options for expansion. So I think that that would be my suggestion versus portals. But the way that they created the architecture was able to be added onto them.
Thank you. Brian, and I didn't read the question yet. Every five years, the school superintendent enters into an agreement with other towns on having those students come to Herman High School. The high school is reaching capacity. I see one of three options. Building a new school at Herman at taxpayer expense. Put portal buildings up at Herman taxpayer expense. Or do not renew agreements with the other towns. Which would you pick, or is there another option, and why would you pick?
Well, my knee-jerk answer is there's enough information to answer that question fairly because the school committee should be doing long-range planning, and the five-year plan should already be set. If we're looking at expansions for our high school in five years, we're so far behind the eight ball, we're never gonna catch it. And then is there a need in 10 years to have an expanded high school? So that's another shortcoming of what I think is happening with the school committee, is that they are not doing the projections of what are we getting in the kindergartens through eighth grade to be able to effectively project what we need in the high school. So if you get that information, and you can see that over the long term, over the next 10 to 15 years, we're going to continue to increase the population of the high school, then we should consider looking at building a new facility or seeing if there can be additions. But without that information, you're almost pigeonholed into having to say financially, you have to go towards a modular school or modular building just because you don't have the needed information to make a good decision, financial decision.
Is there a policy or issue that is important, that is most important to you?
Just one? I got here because of a policy. And I think everybody in the room knows what policy that is, and that's IJJ. So IJJ, while it wouldn't be my top priority when I get elected, it would be one of my top priorities to address once I have my seat. IJJ was a simple, common-sense request for age-appropriate content standards. And then it was a simple request to have an opt-in rather than an opt-out. And the school committee, for whatever reason, decided not to go towards what would be considered by traditional educators a common-sense approach for age-appropriate content standards, followed by what is starting to be included through the high school, because I haven't seen the full proposal. A high school principal, can't say their names anymore, has spoken about an opt-in plan. Well, you can't really have an opt-in plan without age-appropriate content standards. So how are we gonna do that in a policy that has been blocked at the school committee level? So that's my number, that's how I got here. I didn't show up to talk about looks. I ended up getting sucked into it because it just seemed too easy. It was an easy answer. How could we miss that question? We missed it.
Is there a policy or an issue that is important to you?
Well, I'm actually on the policy committee, so all of the policies are important to me. They're important that we update them. There are some that are really, really old and outdated. And one of the ones that I focused on last year was around student voice, around athletics and coaches, and what they felt as the athletes and how that coach influenced them or how they didn't influence them. And so I did bring that forward. We were able to incorporate some evaluations for those coaches that teachers were, I mean, that the students were completing, not just supervisors. So I think that having, and having students have a voice and be part of some of those policies is very important as well.
Thank you.
All right, my turn.
The current school committee has had a couple tumultuous years with Herman citizens. If elected, how would you solve this problem?
Well, luckily I'm there, and I've been through all of that tumultuous business. I think we had a change from one superintendent to the next superintendent, which I think was a positive change. I was part of the interviewing committee. And I think that I, as I stated earlier, that tumultuous change also needs to bring better communication and building of relationships. And that is one of the strengths that I bring to the table that I use through my everyday work with families across the state, is building relationships with people who I may never have met prior or sought out relationships. But that is something that I feel like is the foundation to move forward through this and hopefully get on the other side.
The current school committee has had a couple tumultuous years with Herman citizens. If elected, how could you solve this problem?
One of the biggest lessons I learned was, when I was in command, was perception is reality. And I know I said that to the superintendent, and you didn't agree with it. Perception is reality. What you think about our schools and our school committee and our superintendent is the reality for our community. And I come to this with three things that I tell my boys every day before they go to school. Try hard, treat others how you would want to be treated, and do the right thing. I do believe that our school committee is try hard. I won't take that away from them. And I think the superintendent is try hard. But they don't treat us the way we would want to be treated. And they don't treat us the way we treat them. And on decision after decision, I really do believe that they don't do the right thing. And then on the backside of it, I understand that sometimes a school committee has to make decisions in the best interest for the school department. And that might not be what your opinion is. But where the failure is, is the school committee and school administration does not close the loop again and inform us of why they made a decision. And that makes all of the perception come back around to a negative perception of the school committee and the administration. I've been a team builder of that. And I plan on coming in and opening up the public comment and making sure that those communication loops are closed so that you get the answer to the question that you've asked. Stay. You didn't talk.
It's fine. The test scores, I have to say, these are not my questions. The test scores of Herman students are well below established standards. As a school committee member, what would you do to make strides to improve scores?
Wow, you need more than, what do I have, a minute? You need more than that. So first of all, it's nearly impossible right now to discern whether Herman's test scores are below main learning result standards. But if you look at the last NUIA test, there is a gap specifically in the middle school where they are below the average scores. And this brings me back to the budget question. As a resource manager in the military, everything I did was, where is the hole, and how do you fill it? And that is where I think this school committee, due to the budget process, has missed the mark, where they see that there is a lapse or shortcoming, a hole or gap, call it whatever you want, COVID gap. They have not taken the opportunity to articulate to you that this is the resource that we are applying to meet this need. So what is the specific resource? As a school committee member, that wouldn't be my job to say what the specific resource is. It's to reach out and tap into those administrators at the schools that I have the faith in, that these are the issues that we have, these are the resources that we need to fill it, and then allow the superintendent and the school committee to put together a resourcing plan that doesn't always mean money, but a resourcing plan to fill those needs in the school.
Kristin, the test scores of Herman students are well below established standards. As a school committee member, what would you do to make strides to improve the scores?
The test scores are low across the state, I think, because of the COVID years. And also, when you're averaging test scores, it brings in different abilities. It's not just like the students of the AP or the students of regular ed. It also includes our students with special education. So I think that to have that perception, that we don't have things in place in Herman to deal with that is false. We have interventionists at every building. We have Title I teachers. We also have those children that have individualized education programs. So all of that is in place to bring that up. We also have it in the budget to continue some of those that we did put in place with the COVID funds from the state. And we will continue to, and that's why some of the budget, people are saying it's so high. Well, yes, we found these things valuable, and that's why we're going to continue them. Because all of us as educators want children to be at the state standard. Thanks.
If you were elected, how will you listen to all sides of issues, including those that...
As someone on the Herman School Committee for the last three years and also an educator, I think that I have had a lot of community people come to me, whether they've called me, messaged me, sent me emails. And I could probably choose three, I mean, three to five people in this audience today who would say that I'm a good listener. So I would say that I am always here and open to listening to anyone, even if your opinion is not the same as mine or we are not in agreement in the end. That, as I said earlier, that is one of the strengths that I bring to this position and I deal with on a regular basis in my work every day with different families who come from different backgrounds and bring different philosophies and thoughts to how they raise their children or want their child's education to be different than maybe what I would have chosen for my children.
If you are elected, how will you listen to all sides of issues, including those that differ from yours?
One thing that you've learned, or I've learned as a leader, is you don't have to listen too hard because if somebody has an opinion about something, they're gonna seek out that leader, and they're going to give them that information. So receiving it, listening it, isn't the issue in my mind. It's what do I do with it? How do you manage and process that data? One thing that, God love my wife, she picks on me for it, I can get very unemotional to data, very unemotional to information. And that's what I think is a strong point coming into this, is that I'm, I don't have to be open to listening to you people. You're gonna tell me. I mean, I get people yelling at us all the time. I'm gonna hear the issues. I think my strength is I then am able to strip the emotion out of it and get to the data and the information that is needed and then be able to apply it so that I can make a reasonable decision for the good of the schools, the good of the community. And then what's important for me is to be a good communicator back to you to explain how I received your information, how I processed that data, and how I applied it to our decision. It may not be the decision you wanted. You at least need to hear how I listened to your point of view and used it in the decisions that we needed to make a successful school.
How will you balance budget cuts with the increase in students from new construction and multi-unit apartments being built in town?
Say that again.
How will you balance budget cuts with the increase in students from new construction and multi-unit apartments being built in Herman?
As I spoke earlier about resource management, student outcome-based. The school department and the school committee needs to focus their dwindling resources on student outcomes, ensure that we're plugging those gaps and filling the holes of where we're falling short on the main learning result standards. It becomes almost irrelevant whether it's an apartment, because we have apartments, we're getting more students. That is a distractor in the question, whoever wrote that question. It's, we may be having dwindling resources and we may be having an increase in student demand. But it is incumbent upon the resource managers to be able to take the resources that we have and apply them to fill those critical needs. And if the cut comes, there has to be cuts. That's the hard part about the job, is if there's gotta be cuts, money talks. And that's where, unfortunately, I take the emotion out of it and I look at it purely as a data resource manager of what needs to be shrunk and that's just the way it has to be. Sometimes those are the hard decisions we have to live with. Ask me for a screenshot.
Yes.
How will you balance budget cuts with the increase in students coming from new construction and multi-unit apartments being built in town?
I think that question is a perfect question that we would bring to the table for both the town council and the school department to work on together. Because the town council is approving new construction and additional apartments. And we are, the school committee, trying to make sure that our teachers aren't having classroom sizes of 25 students. Because if we increase the classroom size without additional teachers, then that affects the student learning. So it's all a ripple effect. So we really need to work together with the town council on this issue, which I do think that cutting the budget, when it is going to directly affect student learning, because that seems to be what's coming up, is people are saying we're not focused on student learning. So it's all related. And everybody just needs to really build that trust relationship and communicate about it and how can we come to a compromise in those budget cuts to make sure that it's not directly affecting... All right, thanks.
Wait, no, I mixed that. No, that's right.
You got it.
I have my sheet. Keep it tight. I'm trying. What do you see as the school committee's role in supporting teachers if they face false accusations and harassment? How can you help retain great teachers?
I have learned over the last, it's been about, I think, 18 months because this tumultuous time that you mentioned started around October 2021. So I think that I am actually a prime example of what you do to support your teachers, to make statements during the meeting, that we are, as the council, are here to protect our teachers and our administrators, that we are here to work together. And that the negative impact that a lot of people are having with those accusations is not solving anything. And a lot of them are false. And I do think that we need to stand up more often to right the wrong. And I think that that is definitely something that I'm going to move forward with. Even at the last meeting, I made a statement about that. And I just want, as Brian mentioned earlier, that he thinks that he do unto others as you'd want them to do unto you. And I do feel like being kind and being a good person is where it's at.
What do you see as the school committee's role in supporting teachers when they face false accusations and harassment from community members? And how can you help retain great teachers?
First piece, where is it coming from? I mean, let's get through the smoke on that question of what's happened in our town in the last year and a half. Where is the root problem of the harassment? And don't perpetuate the narrative that there are people in the town that are harassing teachers when if you boil down what really happened, there's one person that made a very bad statement about a teacher. So look at where it's coming from. Second, look and see what's the truth behind the comments. Is there any truth to what is being actually said? And then put it in proportion to the background noise that you've got in the community. If it's a teacher that they've made a negative comment about and the person can be spoken to, it's, we're not going to stand for that. We need to be clear that as a school committee, we don't stand to let our teachers be harassed. But on the same token, you need to look at where it's coming from and put it in proportion. And those are some things that I think were missed in the last year. Stay. I just wanted to get away from that question.
This is the means you're on. What do you hope to accomplish as a school committee member?
Improve the communication and relationship between the school committee and the community. Because right now, it's not a very productive communication. And it was, you know, I think two months ago, it's been two months ago, I think it was May's meeting was admittedly dreadful. April's meeting was admittedly dreadful. But I'm looking at it from a different standpoint. This community and that, that school committee has set the conditions for people to be very upset. And if you leave people in a position of being upset for too long and you're not listening to what they have to say, and then you're not taking action on the things that they do say, you're going to have an outburst. And that's what we've had in this town in the last two months. So that's where I feel that we are with the rift that we have within the town.
What do you hope to accomplish as a school committee member?
If I'm elected again, I will, I will do better at making sure that that communication loop that Brian mentioned is a priority. I do think though, that you mentioned the community and the town. I mean, the school committee, but I feel like it's a triad. It's also the town, council, the community, both those that have children in the schools and those that don't. There are also those people, adults in the community that are, that need to look up the facts, know the facts, be aware of what's going on in both entities so that we can move forward. My goal on the committee is to move forward and to get by this. I was on the committee the first year and it was totally different than the last two years. So I'm really hoping that myself, in addition to the other community council members, just too many words, committee members, that we can all come together to move forward and be, and have a positive future and not so much stress. Stay.
This is a tough one. There's been a lot of controversy nationally pertaining to the issues surrounding gender identity, transgender, and other issues, including books deemed pornographic. How would you reconcile personal rights and beliefs with the responsibilities of being an elected school committee member?
Whatever, you're picking the tough ones. Well, I've already been doing this. So I am a person that is respectful of all, of whoever is at the table, whoever is in the school. And I think that we do have a policy around that, that Brian mentioned, that people aren't happy with. But I also have challenged some people to follow the policy and see where it ends and see how it will go through that process. I don't know what else you asked at the end.
How do you reconcile personal rights and beliefs with the responsibility of being an elected?
Yeah, well, there are laws. There are laws that are above me. It's not up to me to, as just one town, you know, committee member, to be making those decisions for all of the people that it affects. So I am someone who's going to follow those laws that are already in place.
There's been a lot of controversy nationally pertaining to the issues surrounding gender identity, transgender, and other issues, including books deemed pornographic. How would you reconcile personal rights and beliefs with the responsibility of being an elected school committee member?
My answer's gonna cause, there's gonna be haters and lovers with this answer. Why are we here? Is that the role of the school? Is gender identity something that we want to hang our hat on and say that this is what we're going to teach and manage and is going to be the subject of our school committee meeting night after night? I look at it and say, no. There may be laws out there that are anti-discrimination and make sure that their rights are protected. Absolutely. That is not the focus of our schools. Our schools need to be focused on traditional education, gender identity, sexual orientation. Those are all personal issues that we can, we can have support systems within the school to provide assistance if it is needed. We do not need to seek this out within our student body. We need to seek out education standards and focus on them. And when those standards become part of the main learning results, then as a committee member, I will be interested. I will put that on my top priority list because they're an education learning result. In the meantime, it becomes the noise of running the school because we need to be focused on the traditional learning that most of us had when we were in school. Stay.
This follows up. What is your, it's from a different person. What is your plan to ensure that all students feel safe and supported in school, regardless of their race, ethnicity, gender, sexual orientation, or socioeconomic status?
I think it was Morgan Freeman that said something to the effect of, if you want to stop problems with race, stop talking about race. I believe in equality. You treat everybody equal. And if there is a bully or a problem within the school, I have faith with the school administration to deal with those things. We do not need at a school committee level equity programs to address these things when we can have a school that is based on equality and equal learning to make sure that the main learning result standards are met. And that's my view on those sort of issues. I don't think it's any question of how I feel about that one either.
Kristen, what is your plan to ensure that all students feel safe and supported in school, regardless of their race, ethnicity, I'm sorry, ethnicity, gender, sexual orientation, or socioeconomic status?
My plan is to trust and have faith in the administrators and also the teachers and guidance counselors and social workers that we employ to ensure that for all of our students. Similar to what Brian said, it's not me as an individual to make sure, but to support them in what they need to make that happen for all of those students. Oh, yeah.
How do you plan to address bullying and harassment in schools? And what strategies do you believe are most effective in creating a positive school climate?
Within the last nine months, we've actually updated the bullying policy. I don't have it memorized, but I remember it was a great plan, everything from addressing it, how the administrators would address the students, not putting them in a situation where the person who was being bullied was with the bullier. They just were really thoughtful about how that worked. We involved all of the administrators and also the guidance department and how this is carried out within the schools. And I think that, again, similar to the last question, I will put my faith that they are doing the best job that they can unless I hear from a parent that that's not happening. And then I would inquire more closely. But I think that our schools, teachers, and all of those staff have a good handle on our current policy and implementing that for all students.
Brian, how do you plan to address bullying and harassment in schools? And what strategies do you believe are most effective in creating a positive school climate?
Initially, I don't know of any bullying issues, true bullying issues in the school. I've got boys that are in school and they get bullied a little. It's part of society. Bullying happens. So how do we deal with it? I think the current policy does deal with it. But if there was a specific bullying issue, I think it's very important for it to come up through the administration so that if the school committee needs to take one of their actions, which is within our right to do an investigation, to do an investigation on that specific bullying instance. But I think right now, the school administrators handle it effectively and I think the current policy meets the need. Stay.
I have a question, more questions.
I know I'm watching the clock.
How will you ensure that students with disabilities have access to the resources and support they need to succeed in school? And what steps will you take to address any existing disparities in access to these resources?
I mean, I've been, I've been very pleased with the way in which the elementary school and what our experience has been with any sort of learning disabilities or any of those issues. I think we have an effective special education program within the schools proper. It goes back to my resource management philosophy where if we're doing proper reporting throughout the year of where the schools are reporting through the administration to the school committee, if we see that there is a lapse or a hole in those special education needs, it then gives the school committee the opportunity and out years to apportion correct resources to make those needs. But as of right now, I'm not aware of any major special education issues because they are meeting what is set by law and policy. And I think our special education teachers are doing a good job of managing that.
How will you ensure that students with disabilities have access to the resources and support they need to succeed in school? And what steps will you take to address any existing disparities in access to these resources?
So as a special educator here in the state, I actually have had many parents reach out to me in the past 20 years to help support them with understanding, school law, special ed law, what their child's getting, how to advocate. And that is one of my strengths. I think as a committee member, that's really not my role. However, I have had multiple conversations with the special ed director about certain things, shared additional resources that she was not aware of for students that we currently are serving. And as someone who specializes in children who are deaf or hard of hearing, access to things and access by the standpoint of language, whether that be visual or auditory, is my specialty. So I think that I am a good resource on the committee for both parents and the administration as a whole.
Do you support the efforts of the current school board to increase communication with the public? What ideas do you have for further engagement of Herman residents in schools?
Yes, I do support more communication. We actually work closely with the superintendent this year and his goal to be more on social media, which is not his thing. So if you're a person who isn't used to doing the social media, it is hard. So I was giving suggestions about, with ideas. I think it happens at every school. Every school has their own, like, let's say, Facebook page or Instagram page. And it's who is responsible for putting that out? Are there responsibilities on all the staff to give that great information to be shared? Because I think there's so many positives and so much happening in each one of the buildings that needs to be shared, as well as things that come up that are concerned, whether it's the phone lines are down or the water pipe burst or things like that, or we have to dismiss school early or a bus broke down on the way home. or a bus broke down on the way home. All of those things are around communication. And as a parent, I always like to be in the know ahead of finding out some other horrible way. So yes, I will make sure that that is a priority, but also come up with strategies to make it easier so it's not all on just the superintendent's shoulders to make that happen.
Brian? Do you support the efforts of the current school committee to increase communication with the public? What ideas do you have for further engagement of Herman residents with the schools?
So we're talking about two different layers of communication. Again, I tried to drive that home tonight of what's happening in the school level down, I think, is good. We hear from school teachers, administrators. When there's a bus problem, that information's fine. But when you bring up actions that the school committee is currently doing to improve communications, my response is, what? Because with the latest Communication Policy BED, they actually cut out a portion that allowed parents to have input during the discussion of an agenda item, which is hurting communication. The communication the school committee needs to be focused on is at higher level policy, communication, budget information, learning result, and student performance analysis. That is the information that you want to know from the higher level school committee, senior administration. And that is where the breakdown is happening. When you ask a question, you deserve to have that answer, at least by the next school committee meeting. So does that mean we put in the agenda a response to the prior meeting's questions? Does that mean that we put in the minutes the response to questions that were made? And that we have to make sure that the school committee does, that is required of them? It gets on their agenda that they will have a budget report and other administrative reports, but they're glossed over during the committee meeting? They'll be put in a packet, so you can read the packet. But how many of you printed your 77-page packet before the meeting? So they can say, "We're providing you the information, but there is an inherent requirement for the school committee to publicly provide it to you so that you can provide comment and feedback of the committee." And that process is not happening. And that's not Facebook. That's not the internet. That's doing just regular, expected committee functions on the agenda. Nice, stay.
And this is the last question, now that you've learned from this thing. What policies do you support to ensure that schools are safe and secure? And how will you ensure that these policies are implemented effectively?
I looked through part of our, the majority of our safety policy. There's one piece that I think is dreadfully missing. And it's at no fault of the school committee. It's a cultural thing right now. And that is, we all had questions about school safety in regards to active shooters. First of all, I have no issues with school safety right now of day to day. I trust our administrators and teachers on that. Although, the most recent thing has been active shooters. And as I've looked through our information, I've not been able to find any updated policy or procedure or safety action that would address active shooters in that level of safety. As a former military person walking into a school, we can do things that provides that sort of active shooter protection that we're completely missing the target on. And the reason being is, we don't know we're supposed to be looking at that. Fire safety, when was the last time a student died in a public school due to fire? Can't say, but we have fire drills, fire extinguishers, fire alarms, sprinkler systems, fire truck lanes, all of those things because we are on top of fire safety. We need to, if we're not going to look at it as a nation, we can look at it as a community of what about personal safety of our children for things for an active shooter? And that has already been brought up by a parent in public comment. And it's something that is the reason why on my side, the first thing says safety. Because as a leader in any organization, your first priority is always safety. And this safety question right now is the active shooter question, or the public shooter, school shooter. So that's my biggest safety concern.
Thank you. Tristan, what policies do you support to ensure that schools are safe and secure? And how will you ensure that these policies are implemented effectively?
I know that this year, we were able to finalize the contract with the Scottish Sheriff's Department to have a SRO. So we are going to have one who is, you know, three different campuses. So that isn't exactly ideal, but I think it's a start. I respect Brian bringing up about policy. I am on the policy committee. I will look into that. It is my understanding that there are lockdown procedures that are followed at the schools. And I do know that when they renovated the elementary school, that the front part of that building is actually bulletproof, like with the windows. So I do think that there have been some steps, maybe not in every building. I know the superintendent's office just put in a bulletproof door, and also that you have to be announced to go in there as well. So I think that there are ongoing improvements to increase safety. And we can always do better, as Brian mentioned. So I will put that on my to-do list if I am re-elected for the following policy meetings.
Very good. Thank you. You can stay there for closing our statement.
Yeah, I guess my closing statement, I didn't prepare anything. I wanted to see how this question and answer section would go. But I think that most people who came tonight, and maybe there are people that will watch, have already decided who they're voting for. So I do know many people in this town, and I know, I'm sure Brian does too, and we have the people that support us. But please know that I am always here and I am open to listening, to hearing what you have to say and to represent your concerns that we can bring back to the school committee and hopefully move forward. There are things that Brian mentioned about closing the loop on communication, and I do think that that's extremely important. And there were some questions that maybe had multiple parts to it that I didn't totally answer. So I will give myself grace tonight. But I thank you all for coming and for hearing our views on each of the subjects that were brought up. Thank you.
Right.
I just did my closing comment too. So, you know, what's on my side? What do I stand for? And there's three things on my side. One is student safety, which I've already discussed, brought up to you. The second biggest one is parental rights. And that is all encompassing. Because as parents, we have to have, say, what's going on with our students. And when I look at a school, I look at it as any organization or any business, I was taught the three Ps. And that was policy, people, and product. Or process, people, and product. We're a policy. The school committee's doing a fairly good job with the policy. We have the right people in the schools to hit the people piece of it. But the product is our kids. And we need to not lose sight of that, which makes the parent the customer. So when we're dealing with schools and you think of it as a business, even though I realize it's not a business, we need to treat parents like they are the customer, and they have that parental right. And the final piece, which I've already hit on, was educational standards. Our focus needs to be educational standards. That's what makes the product. And that is something that we really didn't get into a lot with the current school budget. But the priorities were not set that support student standards and student outcomes. And that is where I feel that a focus on the budget needs to be for me. So we didn't get to talk about the survey either. But to kind of throw the final stick out there is, there is a survey. And it's happening on June 13th, actually, early voting on May 15th. It is a survey. I believe in age-appropriate content standards. I believe in a resource-focused budget. Do you believe in those things? And if you believe in those things, go to the ballot like it's a survey. Because that is a poll on whether you support age-appropriate content standards and whether you're happy in the way the budget is going right now. And if you support the attitudes that are coming of the school committee that we have. Because I'm going in there with the intent to improve those things. Thank you.
Yes.